Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Worcester City Council, scheduled for this July 2nd, 2018. It's after 7:30 PM. Council will be on summer hiatus after this meeting, so the next regular meeting will be Monday, August 20th, 2018. There might be a special meeting, who knows, but there are no meetings planned until that date. If you would, Mr. Apollo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Bastancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
All our present, so we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. Basically, it will be the Mr. Sanders show, so you're going to be the impresario tonight, so we'll follow your lead. At this time, I ask that you stand and join the rest of the members of City Council and recite the Pledge of Leagues.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They've only had one meeting since the last time we met, so I would look for approval of the minutes of the June 18, 2018 meeting. Motion approved by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Minutes of June 18 are approved. Communications from the mayor. Welcome, Mayor. I know one of the important things tonight is your recommendation.
Absolutely. So, welcome, Mr. Breitner and members of City Council. It's a night to be back and with you again. Really, the main part of my report is to introduce you and request from you that nomination for approval of a new law director for the city of Worcester. Hopefully, many of you have gotten a chance to visit with John Scavelli here in the audience tonight and get to know him a little bit. I know that his dossier was forwarded to you about his resume and his history a little bit, so hopefully you've had some time to get to know him. Just because there are others in the audience, I did do this brief introduction to council ahead of time, but John was raised in the Canton area. He went to Central Catholic High School. He went to Ohio University and double majored in history and French. He became a Juris Doctor at the University of Akron School of Law and became licensed to practice in Ohio in November of 2004. He's worked as a Stark County Assistant Public Defender, worked at the city of Stowe as Assistant and Deputy Law Director. He is now Talmadge Law Department as Assistant Law Director. He's owned his own private law practice from 2012 to the present. He enjoys the performing arts and has been involved with the Players Guild in Canton and the Carnation City Players in Alliance, Ohio, and he's also been an adjunct professor with Brown Mackey College in Canton, Ohio. John has been visiting with us in the administration for about two or three months now. He came to our knowledge via a friend of our area of Worcester. We had a number of applicants and we did have local applicants that were part of the review for the law director position. John really sort of bubbled to the top of our pool of applicants and I am submitting to council tonight and asking for your approval of John Scavelli as the law director nominee for the city of Worcester. Just to complete my report to you, since last I was able to be with you, I was able to have the honor of attending the IBM Watson Health Top 100 Hospitals for the city along with a number of board members from the hospital. It truly is a great honor. I left on your desk the outline of it. There are 100 hospitals. They're broken down into five different categories. One is a major teaching hospital. One's teaching hospitals with 200 or more acute beds. They have large community hospitals with 250 or more acute beds, medium community hospitals with 249 acute beds, and small hospitals from 25 to 99 acute beds. Worcester Community Hospital is in the medium category with 172 licensed beds as a hospital. It's the largest category. There are about 5,000 to 6,000 hospitals in the United States, and so there are 20 hospitals per category, and medium hospital is the largest category. So, we are one of 20 out of many hospitals in the United States that our metrics prove that we are one of the top hospitals in the country. So, very great honor. We appreciate being able to receive that for our hospital and our community. Freeland O'Swinton, he's probably on the paper celebrating 58 years here in Worcester, so that's quite an event, and our congratulations to the folks that started that and continuing being involved in that. I attended the Ohio Municipal League Midyear Conference over in the Canton area, actually the Football Hall of Fame, where it was held, along with five others from the city, Joel and Andrew Dutton and Jonathan and Lynn and one other. Tim, one, thank you. So, we got caught up on the latest and greatest as far as state legislation and what might be coming down the pipe at the city. Worcester Community Hospital information systems were involved with an information difficulty. Essentially, they were hacked as a hospital. They were. The safeguards, the firewalls that were in place did protect all patient information, so there was no filings that needed to be done because it never got into any of the patient information, which is a very good thing. It did cause disruption in the way the hospital operates, but all operations, surgeries, patient care, everything continued on. We had to revert to some old school ways of helping keep people's patient information available to docs and nurses, but we survived and everything is back to status quo, and I'm so pleased that the hospital has a very good IT system in it and that it's forwarded what's happening throughout our nation and really the world with these cyber attacks. Attended a jail expansion presentation by the county explaining what they're hoping to achieve, and I'd be happy to talk about that with any of you at any time. Attended a meeting with the Orville and the county in discussing possibly doing joint dispatching together. We're re-investigating that again to see if that may be a good thing. Had the WarCog monthly meeting. Attended a WADC retreat to discuss future planning. Want you to know that the Northeast Quad down at the square is getting close to completion. We hope to have that finished up here within the next few weeks, so hopefully that will get back to normal in the downtown sector. And I don't have to tell you that paving is happening all around the city because you've probably gotten delayed in one place or another in the process. So, hopefully, that is starting to settle down now because some of the major streets are now finishing up. With that, I'll turn it over to council for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one petition, and it's for a liquor license, a new one, for Sticks Acquisition, which I think is, it used to be known as, the grocery store that used to be known as Bueller's. Anyways, if you would read that, please.
I, yeah, I'll have to.
Recuse yourself. You can stay there.
Okay, thank you.
You do not have to go sit in a call. If you would read the petition, please, Mr. Apollo.
Ohio Division of Liquor Control, Sticks Acquisition LLC, 336 North Market Street and Patio, Worcester, Ohio, 44691. They are looking for a D3 permit class, and that's all there is.
All right. Looks like they also were talking about expanding it out to the patio, so maybe the restaurant will be revived, so. As you are aware, we have three choices. We can have a hearing here. We can have a hearing down in Columbus, or we can waive the hearing. What's your pleasure, council?
Motion to waive hearing.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Silvestri.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. I saw it was going. If you would, please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing.
Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
I recuse myself.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
Okay, if you would, Mr. Apollo, please contact the Ohio Division of Liquor Control and let them know we are not requesting a hearing. We do not have any communications from the public, so this would probably be as good a time to, for me, to request of council unanimous acclamation to accept the recommendation by the mayor of John Scavelli as our law director. As you know, we have advise and consent powers with regard to the law director and the finance director. So, Mr. Scavelli can only take that position if council approves, but I would ask that it be unanimous acclamation and we can welcome him as our new law director.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bastancic.
I'll second it.
And second by Mr. Ansel for unanimous acclamation, appointing Mr. Scavelli as our law director. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Welcome, Mr. Scavelli.
Thank you very much.
But we will have no singing of reports.
I promise. I'll keep that in the theater.
All right. You know, having to deal with Benson was tough enough, and now another thespian. I'm getting too old for this. No, actually, welcome, and we're very glad to have you, and you came with a great resume, and I think you will serve the city long and well, and I'm sure Mr. Gibbons will have no problem resuming to kind of his part-time, although valued, status, but you've served well in the interim, and we appreciate that too, Mr. Gibbons.
Happy to be of service.
All right. So, again, welcome.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to committee reports. I don't recall having any committee meetings since last and no public hearings. And there is no unfinished business, and we'll roll right into Part 7, New Business. It'll be ordinance number 2018, day 010. And as I said, Mr. Sanders will be stealing the show the whole evening, and this is one of five. It's slated for three readings, but before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, I will ask very kindly, Mr. Apollo, who did a very nice job of presenting us with some nice refreshments when we had a meet and greet with Mr. Scavelli, so thank you for that. And if you would, read the title now. You better take a deep breath, that's a long.
This is a long time. Ordinance number 2018-010, a resolution stating to the Wayne County Commissioners pursuant to revised code section 709.03, the services which the city of Worcester would be able to provide for a single parcel site known as 4430 Friendsville Road, Worcester, Ohio, parcel 53-00456.00, which is bound by the Worcester City limits to its east, south, and west, and which is bisected by Friendsville Road and declaring an emergency. J. Alex Quay, Esquire, agent for petitioners James R. Richard, Dale D. Richard, Susan M. Short, and Sally J. Schrock.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is rather straightforward. I know that there's been a lot of discussion amongst council members. I know there's been much discussion amongst various people in the community, but what we have here this evening is simply a request by the petitioner that we will provide city services to the parcel of property that was mentioned previously. And at this particular point in time, as you read down through the actual ordinance, you know, police protection and fire protection will be provided. Water will be provided, sanitary sewer will be provided, as well as storm sewer as well. The city will also provide other miscellaneous services, you know, but not limited to residential solid waste, maintenance, the dedicated streets, access to parks. And these services would be, those services would be immediately available. At this point in time, due to the time constraints, the petition was filed with the county commissioners on the 25th. We have 20-day window in which to either basically say yes or no, not so much even to say yes or no, but just to provide services or not provide services. And I don't know that there's really much more that I have, that I can describe with this, so I'll just open the floor for discussion at this moment in time.
Well, I would point out that Mr. Quay is here and one of the property owners, Mr. Richard is here as well.
Yes. And so, I guess at that point, you know, if there's any questions that council has related to this, I mean, both those gentlemen are here, and I guess you might as well feel free to ask them if there's any clarifications or additional information that you need. Mr. Myers?
I don't really have a question. I just think it's a great opportunity for the city of Worcester to extend our growth in the direction that is being developed up north in the city and should be a really welcome annexation to our community.
Yeah, I would agree. At this point, I'm very excited to see this opportunity for the city. It's in the perfect location, and at this point, it's been out there for quite a while, so it's nice to see that this opportunity's come to us now. Mr. Ansel?
Oh, yes. Just from a point of public awareness, a better definition, we've been using the word expedited annexation requests, and it really isn't expedited. It's just a more efficient streamlined methodology if certain parcels being considered meet seven criteria as outlined by the Ohio Revised Code. And if it meets those criteria, it can go through the more efficient process in terms of city acceptance at an R1 level. Further zoning compliance issues will be at the discretion of the City Zoning and Planning Review Board and City Council. So, this is a very efficient process. And the seven criteria, I just want to highlight it. One, it meets all of the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code as outlined. The owners of the properties have to go together and represent a unified whole of what they've done in this particular case. So, they've done the legwork to get a consensus opinion and recommendation for future use of this parcel comprising of several parcels, now one large parcel. It does not exceed the 500 acres, which is an annexation limitation. It is contiguous to the boundaries of the city for at least 5% of its proposed perimeter, and this is, it's 75% in all practical purposes. It doesn't create an island or a void within the parcel reference, so it does cojoin our current city limits. The city does agree to provide the proposed services. There aren't any restrictions or unforeseen costs because this is contiguous to the boundaries of the city. And then finally, maintenance issues must be resolved for any divided street. So, it hits all the criteria very clearly, and when things do achieve those guidelines, now we have an efficient process that we don't have to go through the standard county review protocols and so forth. And this is very, very strategic, and it aligns itself with our city's comprehensive plan, and it's going to be a wonderful corridor for the next 25 to 30 years supporting the growth requirements of the city of Worcester. Initially residential, but I'm sure there'll be other plans in the future for use of this prime real estate cojoining the city's current boundaries. So, it was very compelling, everybody. I'm proud of the role of city council. I know the city administration was overwhelmed with calls and inquiries because this is the first one that we've done like this, but it was a good learning experience and will be better the next time when a situation like this arises. So, I commend Joel and Andrew and Jonathan and the mayor for their support and enlightenment in this process. Thank you.
Mr. Bastancic?
Sure. I have personally no problem with the annexation, and as John said, this is in the city's master plan, and we have been looking to grow in that area for a number of years. My only problem is going with the expedited process, which I understand under both processes, the expedited and the longer, more, what maybe some people call the normal process, we would still have say in how the zoning goes, and we would have public hearings on how it gets zoned as well. I just wish they would have, the petitioners had gone to the, what would be the normal process where public hearings would have been had as to whether or not the city of Worcester should have, should annex these parcels at all. Under the expedited process, we do not have any public input on this at all before the annexation. And it's a large annexation, and I think it's 160-some acres. It's not like we're annexing a corner lot somewhere, and we could hurry up and do it because the need was great. So, I thought it was essential that there be some public comment unto this. There may be some objections to it in the public realm, or may not, but maybe everybody that would come in would be wholeheartedly for it, but they will never get that chance under this process. And I think it would have been better to be seen as not rushing the process, rather, and instead have gone to a more, I guess, intense look at the situation before the annexation. I just feel the public should have had that opportunity. Again, I have no problem with the annexation, it's just that I just didn't care for the process. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you have a motion for?
Motion to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance 2018, day 010, on third and final reading.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, second by Mr. Myers. Any last comments? I'm just going to say that, you know, what it comes down is, do we want the property in the city of Worcester, or don't we? I think that Mr. Ansel made a very cogent point that, you know, that this makes all the sense in the world if it's developed the way it seems it's going to develop. It's going to put more tax dollars in the city of Worcester coffers. I had a discussion with Ms. Warden, and we both agreed that, you know, when it comes to commercial, which probably most of the land will be developed, actually makes money for the city because of the tax dollars from wages. Residential, believe it or not, frequently costs us money, especially if there's a lot of retirees, because they, nothing against retirees, seeing that I'm meeting with Social Security tomorrow. I don't want the silver-haired lobby to come after me. Those types of residential cost us money because we provide services, and the real estate taxes are so de minimis, we don't get really enough to cover the expenses. So, I'm excited, and obviously, once developed, that's going to put more money in the city's schools' pockets as well. So, I think it's a win-win-win for the schools, for the city, and for the owners of the property. Anything else?
Well, the only thing I would add is that when we do talk about zoning, we take into consideration the neighbors, as we always do, and create a buffer between them and...
And just to make a point, we would have one opportunity to object, but the only reason we could object to the annexation after it gets submitted to the commissioners is if it doesn't meet one or multiple of the criteria that Mr. Ansel recited. So, other than that, and anyone in the, any of the township, which would be, I think, Wayne Township, could object, but once again, it's only if it doesn't meet any of the, any one or multiple of the criteria that Mr. Ansel, so anyhow. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number 2018, day 010 passes. You got off light here, Mr. Richard. I thought this would be my one time to be able to rigorously cross-examine you, and it didn't happen, so anyways.
I think we probably will.
Yeah, I do, too.
Hopefully, everything will go smoothly, and we welcome your parcel into the city of Worcester, so.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Thanks for attending this evening.
Thank you.
We turn our attention to ordinance number 2018, day 011, presented by Mr. Sanders. It's scheduled for three readings. Would you please read the title, Mr. Apollo?
Ordinance number 2018-011, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a permanent easement for an encroachment upon the public right of way and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, once again, I turn my eyes to you and give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Upon the survey of the everything rubber-made building, it was found or determined that there are inconsistencies in some of the measurements, and in light of the fact that some of this stuff has gone on for 100 years or more, I guess I don't know that it really has a whole lot of bearing in terms of what's happening today, but we do need to get this cleaned up legally so that the sale of that property can commence, can move forward. What we have, what we are asking the mayor to authorize, to grant permanent easement for the three encroachments that exist on the existing property, the first one is a .6-feet-wide easement parallel to the east lot line onto the public sidewalk, beginning at the northeast corner of the lot, continuing south for a distance of approximately 95.70. ninety-five point seven feet. Area being occupied by the existing east building and corner foundation stones. The second is no more than point-two-feet-wide easement parallel to the south lot line into the public alley known as Beaver Alley. And the third is a point-six-feet-wide easement parallel to the south lot line onto the public alley, also known as Beaver Alley. And I guess I should, and that is beginning at point, at a point-nine-feet west of the southeast corner of the lot, continuing west by thirty-two point six feet. It's fairly benign. Like I say, at this point, this is really just more of illegal. We need to get this, we need to provide this for them so that the sale can move forward. And at this point, I will, I will open the floor for any questions, but it's, at this point, it's fairly straightforward. No questions, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash eleven on third and final reading.
Second. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, seconded by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the rule on the suspension of the rules?
Kevin?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
I just wanted to just say that Attorney Jack Woods here in the audience, and I want to thank her and her family for their longtime support of Worcester downtown community. I know her and her father Marty, who's passed away very well, and many people probably didn't realize that that wasn't owned by the Rubbermaid Company all the years, and it's been an anchor of our downtown community. But just thank you again for you and your family's support.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Anything further? This would have been your opportunity.
Oh, now I can talk.
Yes.
I was out of order. Go ahead and repeat it.
Well, I was all ready to say Mr. Myers, seconded.
That's all right.
Anything else? No one's got to go out there with their ruler and make sure those measurements are proper.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Perhaps it doesn't matter, but it seems, I'm surprised to see Wayne County National Bank appear on the map. I wonder if that's an oversight, or if that's actually like the legal name of the property holders. It'd be on the north and west sides, it looks like. I'm sure it, it's insignificant to the actual building that we're discussing, but I just...
It says a former Wayne County National Bank on the room.
Mine just says Wayne County National.
Yeah, mine does, too. Outside there.
Yeah.
On the map?
On the map, yeah.
Yeah, on the legal description.
Can I recognize me?
Yes.
That is there because there is actually another encroachment that is not part of the city of Worcester. There is a set of steps on the back of the building that go into the basement of the PNC bank.
Okay.
And that encroachment is still under the name of Wayne County National Bank.
Interesting. I like the history behind that.
These buildings just don't change hands often enough for all this stuff to catch up.
Right. Thank you.
While we're on the subject, I did have one question. Under Exhibit A, this may be what you're speaking of, but I happened to see that it, the description is as follows there in the beginning of Exhibit A, beginning at a crosscut in a stone step in the southeast corner of lot number two oh four-three. I just want to make sure that wasn't going to create more problems.
No, that's the southeast corner. The steps that's, the encroachment that has nothing to do with the city of Worcester is on the northwest corner, behind the drive-in. There's a set of steps that goes down into the basement of the PNC building, and some of those steps are on the Everything Rubbermaid, the Quimby Building, property. So when the PNC ever sells that...
They'll be back.
They're going to have to talk to the new owners of the Quimby Building.
Get a history lesson as well as meets and bounds lesson in terms of the description. So we have a first and a second. Any other thing, anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the rule?
Kevin?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
All right. Ordnance number two thousand eighteen dash zero eleven passes. That brings us to ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash zero one two. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders, is slated for three readings. Before I get back to you, Mr. Sanders, I will ask if Mr. Apollo would please read the title.
Ordnance number two thousand eighteen dash oh one two, an ordinance amending Chapter one sixty-two Management Benefits of Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, I turn the floor over to you again.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have here, as was read, an amendment to Chapter one sixty-two of our management benefits. This is basically bringing us in line with some of our other contractual, some of the other contracts that we have with our other employees. As you can see on the, I guess on the third page, in red there, it's talking about vacation leave and how that, how it will work, how it'll be changed, and then basically, towards the end, there's a balance of ten vacation days with a cash-out rate of one hundred percent, which are really, like I say, the two major portions of this that's changing. Again, this is really more of, this really is a housekeeping item, probably something that we should have caught sooner, but didn't, and at this point, if there's, I guess if there's any questions, I would direct them to the administration at this time.
I do have a question, just out of curiosity. This isn't governed by OPERS, the vacation accruals, it's not? It's independent at each municipal level then in terms of how vacation is handled?
Well, vacation itself is something that's contractual. Actual accepting of time, service time from another governmental entity is addressed in higher revised code. Our management ordinance doesn't, isn't worded the same way a higher revised code is.
So we're not consistent with the Ohio Revised Code?
As far as management goes, correct. You know, our other CBAs, you know, we have the ability to accept that service time.
Which is governed by OPERS, the retirement program, right? I mean, your years of service, your tenure, your retirement, if you go to...
Well, that's for retirement. We're just talking on...
Benefits, though.
Accepting service time for the purpose of calculating how much vacation time you would accrue.
Then accrued sick leave would also be under the same umbrella.
Different ordinance. Different, that's a, that's a, sick time is covered under a different statute.
Yeah. This is just, this is just service.
That does transfer automatically. That's confusing. So your accrued sick leave does transfer, but you're saying your vacation doesn't transfer?
For management, right now, it doesn't.
Yeah, okay, just, I mean, it's just a question. I, I just thought that would be, that's far too complicated. If one transfers, it all should transfer, and, you know, common sense.
Yeah, under the city's home rule power, the city has the ability to deviate from the revised code as far as the credit for vacation accrual.
Okay.
This is actually bringing us in line with the revised code.
I like it. I just, that's just, was a question of curiosity, just a point of fact.
I'll assume this came up because of our current lot director, who we bring on board, happens to have a number of years of service at another city.
Actually, no, we've been talking about this ever since we finished up our negotiations with the unions last year. But he would be the first person to benefit.
Well, I think, Scott, a lot of it was on the LeBron transferring. They wanted to just have parity with those type of accrued benefits.
I can guarantee he's not earning what LeBron is getting out of another law state office.
I have a question. Does this apply to, to any governmental agency? I mean, is this, does this go across state lines? Does this cover federal governmental agencies, or is this all within the state of Ohio?
I know the state of Ohio for sure governmental entities.
Yeah, the, the, apps, you know, townships and counties have to follow the Ohio Revised Code. Cities with charters that have home rule can deviate from it, but under the Ohio Revised Code, essentially, all public employees get credit for vacation accrual, no matter where they go.
So somebody from Indiana would still fall into this category under Ohio Revised Code?
Well, there, you, you have what then, I think, with... Full faith and credit? Correct. Okay. That would probably fall under the, under the full faith and credit of the U.S. Constitution, where, you know, that we would recognize, provided the government service was, you know, some states have government service systems that are kind of radically different, but for the most part, yeah, you know, as long as they were, you know, analogous government service, it would be, it would be covered.
Thank you. Did you know that you're on the clock now, apparently?
Pro bono.
Thank you.
With that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero twelve on third and final reading.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, seconded by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the rule on the suspension of the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ordnance number two thousand eighteen day zero twelve passes. Ah, the penultimate resolution tonight, number two thousand eighteen day zero forty-four, presented by the impresario, Mr. Craig Sanders, is scheduled for three readings. Before we get to you, Mr. Sanders, I will have Mr. Apollo read the title.
Resolution number two thousand eighteen dash oh four four, a resolution requesting that the Planning Commission pursuant to Worcester Codified Ordinance, Section one-one-oh-five-point-oh-three, review and consider proposed text amendment to the Planning and Zoning Code, Section
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're not getting too tired?
Not at all.
Okay. I didn't know if we needed to take a...
No.
Yeah, no refreshment or brief recess?
No worries.
Okay.
No, you know, we've managed to approve new zoning code, and we've managed to decide that we want to amend it, and, and I think we hit that in less than sixty days, so, boy, we're batting a thousand on this one. But in any event, what we're requesting here this evening, as you can see in the, in the write-up, that currently, the code says, "All fences on a single property shall have a unified style and a unified color. Different styles of fencing may be permitted on a single property in an attempt to match existing fence styles on the property or existing adjacent fencing on a neighboring After having read through, after much discussion that we've had, and I say "we," me and a couple other individuals in the community, it was kind of brought out that, you know, maybe we need to try to clean this up, and ultimately, at the end of the day, all we're doing is suggesting to the Planning Commission, or we're requesting the Planning Commission to look at what we're proposing, which would be that we just simply say, "All fences on a single property shall have a unified color." We're asking them to review that, and at that point, they will do just that, they will review it, and then they will respond back to us as to whether they agree with us or don't at that point in time. Should they come back and say that they do agree with it, then it would be our, would come back to us then to codify this change or amendment into the zoning code. Like you say, at this point, I know that really, it seems like the zoning, with the zoning code, one of the biggest items that we had discussion with, both publicly here in council and also amongst the committee that was a part of that, seemed to be fences. So I guess that's the hot button this year, and at this point, this is, if this is all we get to talk about, this isn't quite so bad. So with that, I will open the floor up for any discussion.
Mr. Cam?
What kind of detractions did you hear through your discussions with any, any one objecting to this? Is it similar with three or four different types of fence that doesn't match the neighbors?
There was, in fact, a specific situation where they have, are trying to fence a portion of the property, and because of, they have, they have some fence, they have some walls, and it comes down to the point that if you read this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dutton, but if you read this the way this states, basically for them to try to blend that is somewhat complex, correct?
Correct.
So with that, I mean, and this is just one, one specific situation, but yet it brings out the fact that there are other applications in the community where this same situation can exist or could exist, and so at that point, instead of trying to, you know, at this point, just looking at this going, okay, this will be a means of fixing that so that at that point, it at least is something that can be approved.
So for example, if you had chain link on the west side of your property, you can't put privacy fence on the east side?
Well...
Correct.
That would be correct, yes. But the specifics of where we are is, like you say, there's an individual that has a stone wall, and they would like to put a fence up that would be not really directly tied to it, but, I mean, at that point, would be part of the property, and so at this point, based on the existing, the way the existing verbiage is...
They couldn't do that.
What do you do? Yeah, so, but with the change, with this change of just saying unified color, at that point, it just simply, it breaks it down to where it's just simply a unification. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to have any other, any other criteria which to, to be, to match, to be allowed. Mr. Myers?
One of the, one of the issues is that the fence, fences and walls were considered in the same classification, so if you happen to have a stone or brick wall, and you wanted to add a fence, you wouldn't be able to, because it would have to match the wall that you already had, so you were precluded from even adding a fence of any kind. So that's, it was a little bit restrictive from a messaging point, that you couldn't do basically anything at that point.
Right.
In, in looking at communities that have planning and zoning regulations, surrounding communities, we looked at fifteen other communities surrounding our, our area, and none of the other ones had any, any ordinance that's worded quite like ours, or any ordinance at all that's related to this. I'm not saying there aren't any, just, I can read them off, but fifteen surrounding communities don't have anything as overreaching as what we had tried to put in.
Okay.
Is this one of the sections we tried to fix or amend?
Correct. And I'm not saying that we didn't fix it, it's just that we're fixing it better.
A better fix.
Assuming, assuming...
Better fix.
More, more gooder, right? The Planning Commission...
It's the legal term.
Well, yeah. We're throwing in their lap to make a decision.
Well, at, at the end of the day, it really is going to come back to us. I mean, they're, like you say, they're going to review it, and at that point, they will either approve or deny it, and if it comes back to us as an approval, then it makes our jobs fairly easy. If it comes back as denied, then at that point, we have the ability to override them. I'm not suggesting that we will or should, I'm just saying that we have that power. So, so from that standpoint, we'll cross that proverbial bridge at that particular juncture in time, and we'll, we'll see where we go.
And what was the alternative, rather than change this? Could the property owner ask for a variance?
Mr. Dutton?
Yeah, I mean, you can ask for variance any section of the code, but we have a section like this, it doesn't seem problematic, you know, for people to keep getting variances to get around to.
I thought one of the things was where there was like only two variances requested, didn't they?
That was prior, that was under the prior code.
juncture in time, and we'll, we'll see where we go.
And what was the alternative, rather than change this? Could the property owner ask for a variance?
Mr. Dutton?
Yeah, I mean, you can ask for variance in any section of the code. But we have a section like this that's potentially problematic, you know, where people keep getting variances to get around.
I thought one of the things was where there was like only two variances requested, didn't they?
That was prior, that was under the prior code.
And one was approved and one was denied.
I think in our attempt to, to correct it by editing the amendment last time, I think what we ended up doing was making it a little bit difficult to enforce and implement, just because of the change we made. I'm not sure that the planning side people didn't have the right intent. I think they did. I think they had the right intention going forward. I think part of it was when we kind of tried to correct it, it got a little bit difficult to enforce.
But to Mr. Myers' point, I truly believe if the last variance request wouldn't have been rejected, we wouldn't be having this conversation now. So there is...
Well, I think that we wouldn't have amended their original intent, which we...
Well, they just would have been approved, the variance approved, and they would have went along their merry way. So it is what it is.
I have a question. I wonder if we, if we shouldn't consider being a bit more descriptive in the, okay, so I think it was Mr. Myers brought up, the difference between a fence and a wall. And now it doesn't say anything about that, and...
It does in the ordinance prior to the section.
Oh, okay. All right, so it's laid out there.
We're just singling out of very limited...
We're just taking this chunk out now.
We can go back to the original, well, ordinances, but it's in there.
So if you have...
No barbed wire and other things, that's all still there.
So if you have a chain link fence, you can spray paint, for example, your stone wall silver to match it? That would be prescribed by this standard?
Or vice versa.
How do you...
We can't legislate ugly.
Make the chain link fence look like stone, but...
Well, I mean, but you could match the color. If it's a tan, tan fence, you could...
Tan wall, tan fence, correct.
Yeah. So, I guess I'm probably confused in terms that it seems like the amendment should be coming from the Planning Commission or the Board of, yeah, Planning Commission.
It's not what the code section says, we can offer it.
Right.
Yeah.
It just seems that, that's usually what, usually comes that way, instead of a reverse coming from council and saying, so, but I don't, I don't care if this is what council's pleasure is.
Well, if that's the case, then we will, I will, motion to suspend the rules of council and place resolution 2018-044 on third and final reading.
Okay, and this is just a suggestion to council, to the Planning Commission, it isn't enacted yet.
Correct.
That's correct, absolutely.
So a motion to suspend by Mr. Sanders, motion, second, is by Mr. Myers. So if you would, please call the rule.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
No.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Mr. Sanders, motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders is our second.
Second.
So that's the...
Jennifer?
Jennifer?
Yeah.
Okay. Second by Ms. Warden. Any other discussion? Mr. Sylvester?
I just wanted to say one thing before we vote, and that is, you know, I remember when we decided to change our code with the sentence that's before us. You know, there was an attorney, there were a number of residents who felt strongly about this. And I know we're only authorizing this to head to the Planning Commission, but I hope that those residents will be heard and that, that we will take their feelings and desires into account as we move down the road here.
Anyone else?
I just don't like it.
I thought we were done with fences, but I guess not, so. Anyways, seeing nothing further, would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
No.
And Bostancic?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-044 does pass. Brings us to the final piece of legislation, which is ordinance number 2018-013. If you would, please, Mr. Apollo, read the title.
Ordinance number 2018-013. An ordinance amending Chapter 949 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, Wireless Communication Facilities in the Public Way and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get into this, I do want to ask the administration a quick question. How many of these small cell tower applications have we received?
We have received one application for six locations. And that was from a company representing Verizon. And Verizon has been working with us pretty diligently and even working on some of the design guidelines in responding to our requests, you know, to move things a little bit or to height, height things. And now, I haven't seen a move forward with that in quite a while. We had those discussions a couple months ago before, I think before the governor actually signed the, you know, the law that will go into effect on August 1st. But so we're not really sure if we're just waiting for that, or we haven't heard from them in a while, so.
The reason why I asked the question ahead of further, or further explanation is the fact that, just to reiterate the fact that with this, you know, in early 2017, the Ohio, State of Ohio enacted Senate Bill 331, creating the new regulations relating to the small cell wireless antennas in a public right of way. And basically, they slapped us down and said we had no, no say in that. And fortunately, cooler heads prevailed. And it was, SB 331 was challenged in five common plea courts across the state. And at this point, what it yielded for us, most importantly, is at least some level of, of control back to our community related to these items. These, you know, could have potentially been rather heinous in terms of, you know, optics and locations. And so at this point, this, this definitely is, is good news for us. But what we've done, what's happened, what we're looking at here is a resubmission of the new version WCO 949 that will conform to the new state law and allow the city of Worcester to take advantage of the provisions of that law that are obviously more favorable to municipalities, and also has simplified our ordinance relating the placement of the technical requirements of the city's guidelines. And at that point, meeting revised changes in the technologies that will occur over the years. So at this point, I guess we'll open the, if anyone has any questions, we'd like to hear them.
Is this, this completely amends the previous ordinance?
Correct.
This is the latest and greatest language that OML was recommending. If we put it in place before August 1st, then there would not be any lapse in, in coverage for our city. And if it goes after August 1st, then you could have a window where people can grandfather it in. So that's a reason it's in front of you.
With that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance 2018-013 on third and final reading.
Second? Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, seconded by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the rule on the suspension of rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Would you please call the rule on the motion to, what? Any last minute input? I don't see a big lobby for the wireless authorities here against it, so I'm assuming this is the best, best we can do based on the circumstances. Seeing no further comment, would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-013. As Barnum would say, Mr. Sanders, this way to the egress as we move to Ms. Wayne. Let's start with Mr. Sylvester tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. But I have nothing to add, other than happy July 4th, Independence Day to all. I hope you enjoy your time with family and friends.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Mr. Scavelli to the team here. I look forward to working with you and sure having many conversations about what we can and can't do. And that's all. Oh, happy 4th of July, everyone.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes. Congratulations, welcome aboard Attorney Scavelli. And I look forward to working with you also. And have a wonderful time off, everyone. Enjoy and relax and have a great 4th.
Mr. Cavan?
I was just going to say the same thing. Welcome aboard Mr. Scavelli. Look forward to you helping us out. And hope everyone has a nice summer and happy 4th.
Mr. Bostancic?
Nothing more at this time.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden. I just want to say congratulations once again to the hospital, Worcester Community Hospital. Their fourth year in a row ranking in the top 100 in a wonderful award that they've been, that they've received. Also, everybody have a safe 4th of July.
And finally, the guy that did all the heavy lifting, Mr. Sanders.
I have nothing to add. What more could there be?